Yeah.
Period.
Hey Shannon.
Sir.
John, how are you? Good. How are you doing today? Uh, you have a good day? Stayed on the rank?
I'm good.
Stayed on the rank?
Yeah.
Thank you. Is this, uh, we can record this? The Mr. President, your presentation.
Thank you very much, yeah. Um. Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Do you need lines? It's better to have the conversation.
Good one, John. How you doing there? Yeah. There's chatting.
Nice.
Nice. That's good. Very great. Good to be here.
Thank you.
This demonstration. Yes. This meeting at the Livingston City Commission is called order. Okay, we have roll call, please.
Chairperson Bennett.
I'm present.
Commissioner Hopeless. Yes, Commissioner Reddington.
Here.
Commissioner Strachan.
I'm here.
Commissioner Freeman.
Here. Thank you very much. We'll now have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Please rise for the pleasure of the ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Everyone for coming out this evening. Uh, I am making one small request from the commission. Uh, as far as the agenda goes, I would like to move, um, the action item, which is labeled eight, to the beginning of the action items under, uh, category twelve. Um, is there any objection to that? Do I move? Is there a reason for that? Yeah, there's a reason. Um, and I can explain that later. Much. Okay. Yeah. Thank you very much. All right. So, um, we have three consent items for the night. Uh, is there a motion on consent items?
Mr. Chair, raise a motion with yes to consent items.
Is her second.
I'll second that.
So, motion by Friedman, second by Reddington. Roll call, please.
Chairperson Bennett.
Yes?
Yes. Commissioner Reddington.
Yes. Four. Four. Motion passes. There are no proclamations tonight. There is one scheduled public comment, scheduled, uh, presentation by Staley Engineering of Nutrient Removal Treatment Facility Process Evaluation. Mr. Chair. Yes, sir.
I'm gonna ask Ryan Riddle and Robert Seeman to come to the table, as well as, uh, Mr. Holmes, um, for their presentation. Just as a quick note of back, background, as the city commission is familiar with, the city has been preparing, um, preliminary design for a major upgrade to our wastewater treatment plant facility. Um, we are now on the edge of getting final design for that facility, uh, at which point, um, next year we will start construction. This is the same project for which the city, uh, commission approved two years of rate increases, or substantial rate increases in the service time compared to the debt service. And so, uh, at this point, the, um, Staley has completed the original, the preliminary design and nutrient study, and they're here to present some of those recommendations to us tonight for the city commission's, uh, questions, uh, as we prepare to move forward. So Shannon, anything you want to add to that as we get started?
Certainly, I'd just like to go on record and just, uh, thank Ryan and Robert for all their efforts. Uh, they've done an excellent job. Um, we left no stone unturned on this project, and, um, very excited with the recommendation they have in front of you tonight. And I'm happy to say that with all their hard work, uh, we still were able to come under budget of, uh, the hundred seventy-two thousand dollars that we had appropriated, and while we're running around that hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh, and with that being said, I'll turn it over to Ryan and Robert.
Thanks Shannon. Um, I don't know if you can go back to the, to the disk itself, there's a, go back to the, the beginning. So the thumb drive files, there's a, close that. It's closed out of that. And then, right. I need to click on this right here.
Yeah.
See where my pointer is? All right. Thank you very much. So again, I'd like to thank Shannon, my name is Ryan Riddle, Staley engineering, Robert Seeman's here. Um, as Shannon said, we've been working on this project for quite some time now. This is the culmination of the preliminary engineering, engineering portion of that project. Wanted to give you guys an update where we stand on things, and kind of a little roadmap of where we've been and where we're going, and what we found out along the way. So, uh, this presentation, we're gonna review goals. All right. That's all right. So, so, we're gonna review the, the project goals that we started with, um, and to recap some of the phases that we've been through up to today, and what's gonna happen moving forward. Um, the current activities. See what's gonna happen as we move forward into the design phase, and then we'll take any questions that you guys might have to answer. So, when we started this project, uh, it was brought about because of some new permit limits that the Montana Department of Environmental Quality, um, was proposing for the wastewater treatment discharge permit. Um, the current setup at the plant will not allow you guys to meet those limits, which kind of triggered the beginning of this process. Along with that, we wanted to look at being a steward of the river, of the pristine Yellowstone River, and also projects in future growth for expansion, um, as the city of Livingston grows. Um, weighing this on the other side, you know, there's always, you got to keep project costs in mind. Um, how is it gonna affect the users, um, the rates in town? Um, you know, very tight site constraints out there at the wastewater treatment plant, there's not a ton of room to build, you know, large systems, so we had to keep all those types of things in, in mind. And also the, the condition of the existing plant. You know, a lot of the components of that plant have reached their useful life and they're in need of replacement. So, this initial phase of the project addressed these types of things. Uh, next slide, please. So, where did we start? We started in two thousand fourteen in the planning stage. This was a preliminary engineering report phase. Um, I'll get into that in just a second. What we've just completed is this preliminary design phase. Moving along will be the final design phase and then construction startup. Next slide, please. So the planning phase, like I said, was a preliminary engineering report, often referred to as PER in our world. What you have PER is you, is you take a, a grand view of, of the problem, and you look at many, many ways that you could possibly fix this problem. For the PER, we all, we looked at, I believe, eight alternatives, is that right?
Uh, we, we.
Eight and ten different alternatives that could possibly be used to, to solve these issues at the plant. Um, we looked at the permits, we looked at growth projections, we worked with City Livingston and Shannon, and, and to determine what type of growth projections we wanted to look at, the size of the future plants. Um, we evaluated current systems at the plant, we ranked these alternatives, we looked at the cost analysis and different funding strategies to, to allow to pay for this system upgrade. Uh, that resulted in a very comprehensive document that was presented to you guys in two thousand fourteen. That was also used to try to, to get some grant funding for this project as well. Um, that document led us into the next phase of the project, next slide, please. Which was the preliminary design phase. In two thousand fifteen. The next slide, please. So, once we got into the preliminary design, Robert Pennant took over on some of the technical aspects of the design, and I'll, I'll let him check out that, he can run through the preliminary design process that we used.
Okay. Uh, you know, the, the funnel is a real good analogy for what we do in a preliminary design phase. In this phase of the work, we, we took the two best alternatives out of the eight to ten that we originally looked at, and gave those alternatives a much closer examination. Uh, as you can see in the funnel, uh, there were three basic activities. Um, we used a numeric computer model of each system type, uh, coupled, coupled with a model of the entire plant to project the permit compliance over a variety of conditions. Um, using that modeling, we were then able to, uh, size all the components and do a structural design of the large tanks and other items that we might do. That allowed us to make layouts to see how these systems should fit on the site, and then also fed into cost analysis, uh, so we could check where we were on budget. Uh, the two, um, the two processes we looked at, you know, engineers love jargons, one we call the A2O, one we call the ICAUS. They both do the same thing, um, they're just different in terms of the way the objectives are accomplished. The pre-design report that you have in front of you discusses that in great detail. I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip over the nuances between the two processes, except to say that they're both sets factory. Um, so, this analysis over the last several months, uh, is what you have in your report packets. It's, it's the found report. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so here are the results, um, you know, in a simple, simplified format. We compared the two processes, as I mentioned, uh, on the basis of space, complexity, cost, and ability to meet the permit. Uh, after going through the evaluation, now we found that this, um, ICAUS process, uh, is the better choice for a variety of reasons, most importantly, cost. And so the report you have in front of you recommends, uh, selection of that process. Next slide. Um, and this is very brief information, uh, taken from the report, but, you know, this is a fairly large project. Uh, with about a thirteen million dollar cost. Um, in addition to the, the treatment upgrade with the new process, um, the project also includes, um, upgraded facilities to manage the biosolids, which are the major byproduct of the treatment process, and also an upgrade of the disinfection, uh, facilities, uh, which is, uh, another problematic area. Both, both the, uh, biosolids handling and the disinfection, uh, uh, are, those existing facilities also have fairly significant problems. So, basically what we're trying to do here, along with the new processes, is bring the plant up to, uh, an acceptable condition in all the key areas. Uh, and you'll find in your report, uh, much more detailed estimates. Uh, next slide. This is a, a site plan, uh, of the facility, uh, primarily intended just to show you the scale of, of what's going on. Uh, these, mainly, certain places. These red facilities are some of the larger things. Um, and you can see that, uh, compared to what is out there now, uh, these, these facilities are quite large. Uh, so the project includes, you know, the, the new tankage, all the interconnected IP, uh, tie-ins with what's there. Um, uh, another thing, uh, that's notable here is we're reusing, uh, some of this existing equipment as part of this upgrade, uh, to save money. Um, in particular, these two large tanks here. Um, some of you have been on a tour of the treatment plant site. The disinfection facilities are here, so those would be expanded, and they're building around them, uh, in order to facilitate and spread. Uh, so what this layout does is, you know, allows us to get this work done. And then over time, you know, some of these interior facilities, uh, uh, with the next upgrade would probably be demolished and replaced with newer technology that comes along in twenty-three years. Next slide. Uh, I did want to say, uh, a few words, uh, about a very complicated issue. Uh, an issue that, uh, dramatically affects, uh, how we would do business out at that particular site, and that is, uh, soil and groundwater contamination, PCD. Um, the, uh, the wastewater treatment plant site is part of this, uh, superfund shop complex. Uh, we have fairly high concentrations of this material in both the soil and groundwater. Uh, so, from a construction standpoint, we're trying to stay out of the contaminated soil, and, and also out of the groundwater. So we'll be building up, uh, which is, uh, you know, if you can build in the ground, sometimes that's better, but in this particular case, there's a lot of groundwater there, it's contaminated. Uh, we're trying to minimize the production of surplus groundwater on soils, because we feel it's gonna be expensive to manage those, uh, to meet federal standards. Uh, an example of the kind of impacts that we'll see is we'll have scares and elevated work platforms, that kind of thing, uh, to allow operators access to the facility. Uh, another potential impact is that, um, uh, the contractor we select for this work will have to, um, uh, train and prepare, um, their employees to, uh, work around this contamination. So that'll require, um, level one or level two, uh, personnel protective gear, that type of thing. And so, uh, that has a potential to escalate bids for the work. Uh, so our plan, uh, is by having a very defined work scope and staying out of contamination where at all possible, uh, we should be able to get bids from contractors that are reasonable and don't reflect, uh, theory of the unknown, which is what contractors hate to see. Um, there is a cost recovery effort underway, I might let, you know, Shannon update you a little more, in more detail on that. We're basically, uh, calculating potential cost impacts. We're working with, uh, W E T, Out of But, uh, to formulate a cost profile, uh, with the plan, and presenting that, uh, to the original source of the contamination for possible, uh, reimbursement. Anything you want to add to that, that, Shannon?
Probably just more to talk.
Okay. Yeah, so stay tuned, I guess, for that. I think Ryan's gonna take over from here and, uh, cover the next phase of the work.
All right. Thanks, Robert. Next slide, please. All right, so, so Robert just finished covering the preliminary design phase, so that's where we're at now. What's next? What's next is to move on to the final design phase. Uh, it's a very comprehensive, complicated design. Um, what we've done up to now has led us to this point where we're ready to take the next step in producing the actual construction documents to, to construct this. Um, next slide, please. This particular slide shows a, a few of the major items that need to be completed in, in the final, the, uh, final design, um, procedure to get the, to get the job constructed. Um, the first thing on the list is the procurement of an engineer. Uh, we're, we're currently under contract with you guys to complete the preliminary, preliminary engineering phase of this project. Um, that being completed, we are not under contract or tasked to do this, to do the final, final design. Um, in order for that to proceed, there's, there's a couple of different options. The City Livingston could go out for a request for proposals. Um, that's a qualifications and experience-based, uh, procurement process. You can ask engineers to submit their experience and, and qualifications. You can select based on that. Um, you can't select based on price, one of those, uh, RFPs, but, um, that would allow you to, to get several engineers involved in, in the process. The other would be to continue on with us, with the, the contract amendment, essentially to continue on with final design, um, which would avoid the RFP process. Um, you know, that's, that's up to the City Livingston, how they would like to proceed with that, and continue on with us, or, or, uh, looking at the possibility of going up for a fee. Um, some other key items here, um, as you can see, we have the, the cost recovery effort in here as well. Uh, Shannon's been, uh, involved with that as well, and, uh, like you said, stay tuned on that. Uh, there is an effort ongoing to, to help offset some of those additional costs that, that are related to that particular PC issue group. Um, geotechnical studies to, to determine, uh, soil conditions and groundwater conditions at the site are, are critical for, um, site design and, and structural design as well. Uh, it's major components. Uh, the largest one is, is obviously the plans and specifications. Uh, this includes design reports, uh, permitting with Montana Department of Environmental Quality, um, the actual construction documents to, to get this thing constructed. Bidding procedures, uh, essentially taking the, the project from the start of design through getting bids for construction. Um, and then, if everything went great, construction and startup would occur in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, in that timeframe. So that's kind of the, uh, the summary of, of the report that we had to give. Like Robert said, you guys have the detailed, uh, reporting your backs, and, uh, you'd like to take any questions that you might have this time.
Great. Thank you very much.
Unless Shannon, I'm sorry, Shannon.
Oh, okay.
It's all right, I might just follow up with a few things. So, so again, um, Ryan and Robert did an excellent job, I really appreciate your efforts. Um, when I mentioned no stones unturned, um, a couple of the things that weren't touched on, but, um, Robert and Dan Emter are a wastewater treatment plant firm, and actually took, uh, a three-day visit to Colorado, and they looked at a variety of, of fairly old ICAUS plants to brand new, and, uh, very happy with, um, the findings from, from that trip. Um, another thing I'd like to mention is, um, we've been involved with the City of Windide, Montana. They're currently getting an ICAUS plant up and running, and we are gonna be helping them get, uh, the startup that in here in December. Um, Dan has been working with, uh, with the folks over there, and, uh, looking to take a field trip over and, and, and do everything we can to make sure they have a successful startup with that. So, I'm excited about that opportunity. Um, while the costs are, are significant for this project, um, I'm happy to say that we're gonna correct all the deficiencies in our current plant, and at twelve point nine million dollars, um, that is less than what we got in our capital recruitment plan from, from, uh, last, last year, our current CIP of, I think, fourteen point seven million. So, um, there's certainly a, a huge value with this report. Uh, we feel very confident that the ICAUS process is, is gonna be the best process for the City of Livingston for many years to come. Um, already been working with Dimensional Services on, on grant procurements, and even securing loans with the finance department. Uh, we're really excited, we're geared up, and have everything planned out on what we're, we're gonna be doing here in the near future. So, uh, with that being said, you can open it up to questions.
Thank you very much. Really like the presentation's clear and concise. You, uh, brought down, uh, engineering to the basic level for our understanding. Thank you very much. Um, so, any questions for the commission, any points of clarification? Commissioner's turn.
Thank you. Um, so the, the superfund of soil contamination, the PCDs is forcing it all, the, be built above ground, adding cost. What's an estimate of the magnitude of that cost? The extra cost for the PCDs? Order of magnitude. Let's say, in the one point five million dollar range. But there's a lot of factors that, sure, that we're talking.
Where the.
Cluster mine is on.
And then, and, and I think, you know, since this all goes on record, it's, it's important to say that the, that cost estimate and the process is just beginning, and we could find that the, the real estimate, uh, is higher than one point five.
Sure.
That's involved.
And then you're working with W E P to, uh, formally ask the railroad to reimburse a lot of those costs. Is, is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct.
Do we think, uh, does W E P think that it's possible? I mean, does the railroad react positively to that? Sure. I guess I would answer that, I think, either their experience, um, or certain age strategy, so, I think there's possibility, and I think it's certainly worth pursuing. Hope so. Okay, here. Interesting consequence of the pool, I wouldn't guess.
Thank you.
Further questions, clarification from the Commission? Just, I think you've, I have a couple of questions. I think you've explained it before in a previous meeting, but the difference between the A O two and the ICAES, and you're saying that, you know, as from your chart, there's a cost difference that weighed heavy into the decision process. What kind of a percentage cost difference can you see there? I remember it was pretty significant.
The danger you're going to refer to is such a. Here it is, it's appendix. The capital cost is about $16.5 million for the A two O. And the recommended process, the ICAES, is about $12.9, say $13 million. And then there is also a difference in annual operation maintenance cost of about $50,000.
Right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And again, just as a reminder, for us, the life expectancy of a upgrade like this, we're looking at somewhere between 20 to 40 years.
Correct. The process performance itself will be good for these 30 years. Some equipment, you know, experiences wear and tear and is replaced after 20 years, that type of thing. But in general, this is a long-term solution that will only exceed the 20-year plan.
Great. Is there any points of clarification? Great. Thank you all very much for coming. Thanks, really. Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate the time. Anytime. Okay. So we do have one public hearing tonight. It is Resolution Number 4618, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, amending the budget here for fiscal year 2014, 2015 by making revenue adjustments in the amount of $119,749, and appropriation adjustments in the amount of $188,960. Mr. Mason?
Mr. Chair, again, tonight's our public hearing on this particular set of budget amendments. I'm going to ask Ms. Hoog to come up to the room and kind of lead us through the summary of these once again. Again, remember, this is F law 1415, so this is the year that we completed. Right. As we go through every year and make sure you get everything hung out straight without as we move forward in the budgeting processes next year or so. Jesse, do you want to guide us through where we're at?
Sure. The source document for this resolution is the fourth quarter budget review. I believe it was included in your last pack. I'm not sure if it's in this one as well. It seemed to have been placed in my pile of stuff. So the, a number of these adjustments are simply housekeeping items. We budget as best we can. Sometimes it comes in less, sometimes it comes in more. If expenditures come in more, we're required to do a budget amendment. All of these items have sufficient fund balance to cover these expenditures. The ones related to the general fund are ones that we are working later on in this meeting to correct by reducing some capital items and some operating items from the current year's budget in order to come in as close as we possibly can to projected fund balance at the end of fiscal year 16. If there's any questions about anything specific, I can sort of re-answer it. Other than that, that's it.
Thank you very much.
I have a question.
You do?
Yeah. Thank you. What, so what does the adjusted numbers, what is the final balance at the end of F law 15 of the general? And here's the quarterly report.
Yeah, if you look at the appendix to the quarterly report, you'll see a fund-by-fund projection of where I believe each fund will end the year. And so I don't have that in front of me, unfortunately.
You don't? Oh, it's this. Is it this one? Yes, that's the one. And so, um, general.
General fund should be at the very top.
Oh, so we end at 601.
601.
And you know what percentage that is of our?
I want to say that is 15.3, 15.7 somewhere in there. I apologize for not having.
Yeah. And at the end of that day, our expenditures were over the revenues by, it looks like, $900, $850,000.
Eighty, eighty thousand dollars.
Eighty thousand. Four, two, four, seven, eighty thousand dollars.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right. I don't think I understand. Thank you, Jesse.
You're welcome. Further questions? All right, thank you, Jesse. This is a public hearing, and this public hearing is now open. Anyones who'd like to comment on Resolution Number 4618? I do start this time. Just please come up to the table in the front, state your name and address, and questions or points of clarification.
Hello. Have a comment? And because of the nature of the meeting tonight, we'll just ask.
No. I just have a question on forty items. On the Second Street parking lot, $10,200, is somebody telling me what that money was used for? It was a couple of years ago, so.
Chair, Mr. Mason?
So the city entered into an agreement with the owners of the former Yellowstone Country Dodge building. We actually leased that parking lot from those folks. And then we re-leased the parking spaces that are within that parking lot to provide additional off-street parking to folks in the downtown area. And that was an agreement that we entered into during this year, but wasn't, which wasn't budgeted. So since that timeframe, we've been collecting revenues. And in the same document up under revenues, you would see an adjustment for revenue, Second Street Parking Lot lease revenue for $6,550. The difference between the $6,550 in revenue and, what is it, $10,200 is that we had had some periods of time during the year when the lot wasn't completely full. And so that's the difference between the two. This is really something that we originally entered into to try and provide some additional service to the senior center. Some of their folks were really struggling with parking as well. And so, so that's where this has come from.
So you're saying the $10,200 was a projection, not cost?
No, I'm sorry. That is the actual cost for the year.
The actual cost, okay.
Thank you, Goldman. You're very welcome. Still a public comment? Resolution 4618. I ask all for public comment on Resolution 4618. During the end of this public comment period is now closed. Is there any motion from the Commission?
I make a motion to pass Resolution 4618.
I'll second.
So motion by Friedman, second by Holman. Mission discussion, we've had it. All right. So we move on to roll call. Roll call, please.
Chairperson, better.
Yes.
Commissioner Holman.
Yes. Commissioner Reddington.
Yes.
Commissioner Stern.
And Thor.
Commissioner Freyden.
Thor. Motion passes. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution Number 4615, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, authorizing the city manager to sign a general service agreement with Big Bear Contracting LLC for the Livingston Fire and Rescue Bay Door project. Mr. Mason?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to ask our chief, Ben Kaufman, to join us in front of the room. So as the Commission is aware, we have in the annual budget C I P process, we identified this particular project. It is one that the chief will explain the operational advantages it creates. The contract for you tonight is to allow the city to move forward with this phase of the project by utilizing Big Bear Contract. Chief, can you just refresh us on the operational advantages of what we're doing?
Sure. This is a, the first component of an overall project to improve the safety and health of the firefighters and all the visitors and workers here at the City Accounting Complex by removing the diesel fuel from our fire truck from the fire station. Every time we started diesel fire, it'd get a bunch of contaminants to the air in the station. So the initial plan is to have a exhaust system of hoses that come down to the fire trucks. When the fire truck started, the exhaust is sucked up into the ceiling. It goes out through a scrubber into the atmosphere when it's outside, so it doesn't contaminate inside the firehouse in any way. To make that happen, we have to have four doors across the front because all the fire trucks and animals just have to drive straight out onto Calendar Street. And the way we have it now is we have two doors where people can drive straight out. And we have one really large door where the vehicle's going to hang with the way out. And that large door doesn't work because we can't have tracks for the hoses to run on for the fire trucks. We need to take that large door down and put up two smaller doors to make it four straight shots right out onto Calendar Street. And so that's what this project is, is to do a big bear destruction, basically to remove that large wide door on the far end of our firehouse and replace that with two smaller doors, so that there's more doors across the front. And then they will also refinish the front of the building to match the rest of the structure.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there points of clarification from the Commission?
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. So, Mr. Chair, just, I guess, the only other point I would raise is that this was a budgeted project for $37,000, and we have the cost at this point at $32.3, so.
Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Is there a, is there a motion from the Commission?
I make a motion. We pass ordinance 4615.
I'll second.
So motion by Reddington, second by Holman?
Sorry, I said ordinance, resolution.
Yeah, resolution, sorry. No, that's okay. I made the switch in my.
Thank you.
All right. So is there, again, is there any Commission discussion? Is there any public comment at all on Resolution Number 4615, the bay doors for the fire station? Okay, same number, maybe have a roll call, please.
Chairperson, more?
Yes.
Commissioner Holman? Yes. Commissioner Reddington?
Yes.
Commissioner Stern? Commissioner Freyden?
Thor. Motion passes. Our next resolution is Resolution Number 4616, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, directing that existing and future trails in the City of Livingston be designated as tobacco-free environments. Commission?
Mr. Chair, this is a recommendation that comes to us by way of the Parks and Trails Committee. I think also there are some conversations that they have had with W C Healthcare and Tobacco.
Prevention?
Yes, I can see the abbreviation in my head, Claire, but tell me what it stands for.
Tobacco Use Prevention Program.
Tobacco Use Prevention Program, yes. And so I know, Mike, do you want to come up and say a few words about this? I'm happy to commit.
I'll try. Mike Goomas, I'm the chair of the Parks and Trails Committee. We had a discussion last meeting with Ms. Limpy and Ashley about the, oh, they went there. You guys heard about them. So we had a rep that there's come over and talk about this proposal. And we talked it over amongst ourselves, and we agreed it's a pretty good idea. Totally unenforceable, but I think the thing is to kind of, in fact, motivate people to, you know, be aware of the health problems associated with smoking, the start of your cigarettes and your own trails and all that. There's concerns about, you know, the fire hazards when it's kind of drawn through trails and stuff like that. So we talked about that too. And talked about putting some signage up, which still look good for. Maybe some blood cans or something to dispose of the cigarettes. Just to kind of make people aware that this is a smoke-free area. We're trying to encourage people to quit smoking. Be healthy. Most people go out for exercise, right, Chair? It's only a few people still.
So, Mr. Chair, one of the things that we talked about in Parks and Trails Committee too is that it reflects similar kinds of environments that we've attempted to create, both at the schools and other city parks and things like that. It just falls in line with those types, same types of things. Again, as Mr. Goomas said, it's not something that we will have the ability to do enforcement with. Again, what we're trying to do here is encourage folks to model positive behaviors in terms of the administration's course of society. You'd be glad to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mike. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Mike.
Shall we start with a motion from the Commission?
Congratulations, Chair. I made the motion that we passed Resolution 4616. I'll second that.
Okay, so motion by Friedman, second by Reddington. Mission discussion, questions, clarification?
More of a statement. But I know from our discussion that the signage will be on the kiosks that are at each of the trail pits. And so that they won't be posted throughout, but that will be part of that area. Just wanted to say.
That's my question. Is there any public comment at all? Any public comment on Resolution 4616?
Yes, regarding the resolution. Jakey Burke, 327 South Second. Regarding the resolutions before you, honor, I am always amazed at the Commission trying to pass resolutions that are warm and fuzzy, make you feel warm, good, but have, that cannot be enforced. So if something can't be enforced, why enact it? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jake. Any other public comments? Make sure to just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Claire Limpy. I'm an employee of Livingston Healthcare, and I'm representing their point of view on this. I live at 46 Chestnut Lane in Livingston. I just would like to let you know, and I don't know if you got any in your packet, but there were several letters of support for this. One was from Mr. Greg Coleman, who is the emergency manager and fire warden. And he expresses strong support because of the fire safety issues. Another letter was from Dr. Scott Coleman. He's a medical director at Livingston Healthcare. And he is a trail user and expresses his strong support as a physician who treats many illnesses that are caused from tobacco. And he feels that this will enhance people's interest in engaging in physical activity. And also from Dr. Jim Agreed, who is the Hart County Health Officer, who really strongly supports this to, and he's to promote the health of the community and reduce disease and death. And so while there is not an ordinance that is going to be enforced by police, this is very much a measure that enhances people's awareness of tobacco as a deadly product and encourages them to refrain from using it and perhaps totally quitting tobacco. And then there's always the issue of the fire concerns. So, I, we encourage you to support this resolution, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment on resolution forty-six sixteen? Same number, maybe we have roll call, please.
Chair, question better.
Yes.
Mr. Reddington.
Yes.
Mr. Reddington.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Four.
Motion passes. Our last resolution for the evening is resolution number forty-six seventeen, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, of its attempt to amend the budget for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen by making appropriate issue adjustments in the amount of fifty-six thousand three hundred dollars and calling for a public hearing. Mr. Reeves?
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna ask Ms. Holman to come back to the table again. As we discussed just a few moments ago, as we discussed just a few moments ago with regard to resolution forty-six eighteen.
Mr. Reeves? And just before we do, maybe take a quick break. Okay, quick ten-minute break, sorry about that. So, ten-minute break, sorry for the interruption.
So, my sister's name has a sale since the point I have been doing this. And she was, you know, she was named. And she's like, so I was wondering if she was a woman, so she told my sister, and I was like, and. So, the females, and her moms, silver. So, I'm like, I wanna drop with her silver. Yeah, she's black. And so, I'm like, so.
My sister.
Yeah. Something's happened. Things even dropped, and I was taking a storm. Yeah.
Okay, we are back in session. We will pick up again resolution number forty-six seventeen. We already read the resolution, and our finance officer will now brief the commission on the details of this.
So, yeah. So, this is for the current budget we're in, fiscal year fifteen sixteen. And these are budget amendments, there's two parts to this. There is a budget amendment increasing expenditures for the school nurse, which was approved at the previous commission. So, that increases expenditures. But you'll see that the actual resolution decreases expenditures by fifty-six thousand three hundred. And what that is, is as a, as a administration, we went through and said, what items can we put off for here? What items came in under budget? Where can we skip a little bit so that we can make the budget right? And so, what you have there is the preliminary list, and I believe Lisa there has an updated list there. I went a little bit ahead of schedule and put in for the fire department reduction in training and reduction in professional services without having enough conversations with the fire chief. And so, we have adjusted those. It's the same amount, it's just coming out of different line items still within the fire department. It's just cuts that are more operationally feasible for the fire department as opposed to the ones that I had put up on our list. So, you'll see that replacement will make the replacement in the public hearing that will be noticed before the public. So, these cuts combined with additional revenue sources from last year and additional revenue sources from this year, I believe will bring the general fund fund balance back to where we thought it would be for the fiscal year sixteen budget. If there's any questions, I can certainly answer that. If you have any questions about operations, operational cuts, we can certainly answer those as well.
Perfect. Shall we start with a motion, and then we can have commission discussion.
Yes, Chair, I make a motion, we pass resolution forty-six seventeen.
I'll second.
So, motion by Friedman, second by Holman. Mission discussion, any points of clarification, Mr. Stern?
Thank you. Great, so with this, alright, so we just finished off FY fifteen, and that, I couldn't find, I think I must have missed it. So, with these adjustments, what is the final expected balance that of the general fund at the end of FY sixteen?
I don't think I included that in there. When I was looking for the amount to cut, I was looking for sixteen point six seven percent. So, my estimation showed the general fund's back up to sixteen point six seven percent.
Sixteen, so this one here, we had fourteen point one five percent. So, it's, so is the, is the expected balance of the general fund gonna be this one here, or is it? Well, I guess if you change the expenditures to that, it'll change the percent.
Yeah, and we had slightly more revenues than anticipated. Our mill value came in slightly higher, and we also had a few more mills available for the general fund. So, there were some tax revenues that brought that up higher. We're not required to do budget amendments for revenues, so that's why you don't see it there. But the revenues combined with the expenditures, I estimate to be sixteen point six seven percent.
Great, thanks very much, Tom. Is there any other points of clarification from the commission? Is there any public comment on resolution number forty-six seventeen?
I got a question.
Okay.
Maybe. Mike over six eleven North East Street. Item number seven, I can tell if I put that item this. I could raise civic center.
It's the piece of that one.
Oh, yes, sure, so there is, there was, there was ten thousand dollars set aside in this year's budget and capital improvement plan to conduct feasibility study with regard to the civic center. The idea there was that we would invite a professional group to come in and give us their recommendations about what could or couldn't be done to expand the services that civic center could provide. So, for instance, right now, we have a very limited kitchen in the civic center. And so, one of the thoughts was, we really need some professional guidance about whether we should replace that with a more updated kitchen, or if that's even necessary. There's some space that's unused, sort of the back hallway, just kinda doing some space management, marketability type of planning. While it is something we very much like to do, it's not a priority in our, in the sense of getting the administration's perspective and getting the budget back to the place it needs to be with regard to reserve, and that's what we recommended if we want to cut. Okay, I was just wanting to make sure it wasn't involved in the sewer system, it's not part of that. Okay.
Thank you very much, Tom. Would you have another question?
I just want to leave it to that.
Okay, is there any more public comment? Public comment on resolution forty-six sixteen? Okay, great. Commissioner Stern?
Thank you, the firing model, both elements of that is getting cut. That's the second line.
Oh, yes. We currently have both male and female members of the fire department. And so, part of what we had planned to do for the year was to build in some additional walls and remodeling upstairs. And we're gonna do a part of that, but we're not gonna do to an extent that we had planned. This year, we'll do some basic necessary stuff, and then we'll come back in future budgets and finish that up.
Thank you for that clarification. Just my other question.
Further commission comments? Thank you very much, maybe we have roll call, please. Yes?
Yes. Mr. Reddington.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Four.
Mr. Freeman.
Four.
Motion passes, moving on to action items, action item number one, number A, which is, discuss approved denied continuation of city manager's employment contract. I'd like to pass out a letter that I'm going to read to the commission, to the administration. Basically, in the nutshell, after we had our most recent performance review of the city manager last week, it was apparent to the administration, the city manager, and the commission that a change had occurred in our relationship as a commission of city manager. So, what I'd like to do is read my offering to the city commission here so that we can open this up for discussion. It's a letter from me and the city commission to, to the city manager. On behalf of the City of Livingston, on behalf of the Livingston City Commission, I respectfully request your tender of resignation, city manager of Livingston, Montana, effective October twentieth, two thousand fifteen. Should you provide the city commission your resignation tonight, the city will provide you with one hundred eighty calendar days of severance pay. Such severance pay shall include and shall be limited to any pay to which you would be entitled under your employment contract as if you were terminated from your position as city manager. Provided, however, and as mentioned above, the time period of the severance will be extended from ninety days, calendar days, to one hundred eighty calendar days. Fayment of severance shall be made on regular payroll dates over the eighty calendar day period after your resignation. Sincerely, James Bennett, Chairman of the City Livingston Commission. Did I say, excuse me? Let me restate the last sentence, I let the numbering correctly. Fayment of severance shall be made on regular payroll dates over the hundred eighty calendar day period after your resignation. Sincerely, James Bennett, Chairman of the Livingston City Commission. Some of, some of my thoughts here, first of all, before I state my thoughts on crafting this letter on behalf of the city commission. Ed, do you find that the letter is agreeable in the way it's stated?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Why I worked, worked to bring this to the commission for discussion, I feel like a resignation has a greater possible extraction for future possible employment possibilities for, for Ed Reeves. It also provides a more reasonable timeframe for searching for employment for the present city manager. And the severance and resignation also is not only the ending of a relationship presently, but is also the beginning and signals to future candidates that even when there is a departing of ways, the community, the city commission, and staff acknowledge the positive impact of the outgoing city manager has had on the organization and the community of Livingston. And thus, letting them know that they will also be treated with respect and dignity. So, at this point, I'd like to open and offer this to the city commission for discussion and comment, and if it pleases the city commission, a great.
I make a motion that we approve the hundred eighty calendar days of compensation instead of the nine.
Second. Okay, motion by Mr. Holman and second by Mr. Friedman. Further commission discussion?
I have some comments.
Okay? Yes, sir.
So, this is the first time I've seen this letter.
Yes, sir.
It doesn't represent the commission, it represents your viewpoints. After we take a vote, you know, a majority vote, then it would represent the commission. The hundred eighty days, the six-month severance seems excessive. The three-month severance that's in the contract seems more than adequate. When I made this motion, exactly the same, in talking to Ed two years ago at this meeting. When I made this motion, exactly the same, in talking to Ed two years ago at this meeting, Commissioner Freeman said we can't afford that. It's an extra ten thousand dollars. Is that right?
I do think so.
It's six months, is that right? Yeah, so it's six months. It's fifty-eight thousand dollars versus twenty-six thousand dollars. So it's an extra twenty-six thousand dollars. We just ended fiscal, fiscal year fifteen with thirteen point nine three percent reserves. I'm glad Finance Director Hoag has us back on track. We've made these various appropriations. If I lose my job, I don't get any severance pay. I think three months is more than adequate. And I'll say, from a personal standpoint, for this, I just represent myself as one single commissioner. We all know how I feel on the continued employment of this employee. When we went through this performance evaluation, my sentiment was only strengthened that the city manager's behavior was...
Commissioner Stern?
Hold on.
Commissioner Stern, this is, this is personal, private employee, employer information.
The public has the right to know. Hold on, let me, let me rephrase it, so that you will be... I certainly feel like a change is needed. That, that much is certain. I've had chats with the city manager in the past and said, if you resign, I wouldn't work for an extended severance pay. That hasn't occurred. These evaluations have just gotten worse, and so personally, my patience for this sort of thing is at a minimum. And so I consider the three month severance pay to be more than adequate. If we really wanted to go out on a limb, we could maybe do four. But at twenty-eight thousand dollars, an extra twenty-eight thousand dollars on top of the original twenty-eight thousand dollars, and given some of the things we learned about the budget and the performance evaluation, I just can't support it. It's not responsible. That's how I feel. I'm open to the discussion. I think the points you made are very well, very good, and character as community is important, and I see that you're working for sure that, and I respect that. I used to support a position like this, but I'm sorry to say I don't. Three months is still a significant amount of money, and I think it's what the city can afford. I don't feel like the city can afford fifty-six thousand. That being said, I'll take my leave for the rest of the commission. I yield.
Okay. I think I should add, before we have this discussion, that Jesse does have a rundown and breakdown of the six month position. And if you'd like to hear that, if you should like to hear that at this point, I think that would be vital for everyone to have that perspective. Jesse, would you mind presenting your discovery, please?
No, I don't need to, I'm sorry. Yeah, I didn't need to. I was just going to comment on...
On the letter?
On the letter, yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I feel the one hundred and eighty days, that's fine. I feel a little bit out of the loop, say the least right now. It seems like there, when I walked in, it seemed like there was something going on. I want to talk for here. That always makes, you know, something's going down. I feel like maybe this has been discussed, maybe through the commission. I had no idea what was going on. I, I don't know what, what to say. You know, I just, I fell out of loop, and it kind of upsets me a little bit, that maybe there's some, some stuff going on, and that's, that's fine. But that's, me and Ed had talked about that before, about resignation, and I would rather see that route be taken than, you know, having a public firing, but sometimes, you know, that needs to happen. So I'm glad it's going that direction. As far as the money, I mean, yeah, there's, that is a deal, but money being made, money, money goes. I just feel a little bit disappointed that it seems like there was some stuff going on, that, you know, I understand where my position is, resigning. I think a lot of that has to do with what's going on tonight, too. Things happen, you know. I support one hundred and eighty days, you know, I'm, I'm funding that absolutely. A little disappointed, but it's all right. Disappointed before, and I will, before in the future, so. Anyway, good job, James. And so it works out really, you know.
So I have the amount of not only the severance, but also any termination pay and interim city manager, and internal interim city manager, what that may cost. A six month severance would be fifty-eight thousand to fifty-one. At the end, when I take into consideration all of those costs, and, and internal interim city managers through the end of the fiscal year, it would exceed budget by about fourteen thousand dollars. It's thirteen thousand nine twenty. For perspective, that is point three percent of the budgeted expenditures. And depending on how general fund expenditures come in, it may or may not require a budget amendment.
Do you, do you have, do you have printouts of that, Jesse, for the commission?
I do. I don't have copies. I go run and make some more.
All right. Yes, sure. So, and you said, let's see, the severance and you said termination pay, are they separate? Is there anything?
When an employee is terminated by state law, they're required to have a pay out of their vacation hours, and...
I understand. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Jesse. That's all.
Jesse, I do have a question. The PO, termination or resignation, same?
Yes, I apologize, Jesse.
All right, so is there, is there any more comments? Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment?
So if we, so we're approving now that this letter speaks for the whole commission. And so we're asking the city manager to resign, and if he resigns, then we'll provide him with one hundred and eighty days of severance. Like Commissioner Reddington, I also am apparently not in the loop. What happens if we submit this letter, and if a resignation is not forthcoming?
I asked the city manager if the wording of this letter maybe would be accepted by him to this letter, equal to what?
Is that, is that true? I didn't hear that exchange.
Yes, Commissioner Stern, in having read this, this letter, I think if, if the city commission were to approve this letter, I would be willing to submit the resignations.
All right, thank you. I understand. I yield the call.
Do, I'm, I'm going to wait till everyone puts their hand on the panel. Jesse.
She said point one four percent, which is actually, actually, you made a good case that it's not going to make the... In fact, if she had said sixteen point six seven percent. Mister Chair?
Yes, sir. Since Mr. Ogden is making comments, can we take just a brief, um, break? Yes, sir. We'll have a minute break. Thank you very much.
Of course, I've had the paper flipped around in New York. I want to open the round back. Nobody wants...
So Jesse, maybe the manager was, maybe it's different. Thank you, Jesse, very much. I wanted to make sure that this was provided, so that the commission had a clear marker So having studied the financial review and the financial impact, is there any further questions? Do you need further public comment? Thank you very much. We do have a, we do have an action item that has a motion and a second. May we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ogden?
Yeah.
Commissioner Stern?
Four.
Motion passes. Mr. Mees, before you, there you go. I want to give you some chance to say your piece, but before you do, I'd like to say Now I need some more. In the six years I've been involved with the city of Livingston, even though at times Ed and I may have disagreed on certain things, I have seen a tremendous amount of improvement to the city of Livingston. I've seen a lot of improvement to the internal structure and the internal workings of the city of Livingston, the staff. I've seen a great improvement and development of the staff's leadership team and criteria for choosing people. I have the highest regards for the city manager. I think he's done a wonderful job for the city, city of Livingston. I hope that as he moves forward in his life, he can leave here with dignity. He should have his head held high, and I think the community, even though there has been a lot of comments to the contrary, we do not see the city manager act on a daily basis. What we do see are the results. We do have results in the community, although we haven't had results in the past. And we have situations, a multitude of small situations and larger situations where the impact is impossible. So I want to thank you, Ed, for your service here to the community, the city of Livingston, and I will wish the best for you in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I appreciate that, and it has been an honor to serve the citizens of Livingston for the nine, last nine and a half years. It's been an honor to serve this city commission for that time period. So many good commissioners that I've had the opportunity to work with. It's been an honor, a great honor, to serve with our leadership team. We've certainly had some struggles, but I, I say it again, and I do back off of it, that I think today, we honestly have the best leadership team that the city of Livingston has ever seen, and there's not a doubt in my mind that we have the best leadership team in the state of Montana, despite two folks that might have set me on the ice. And, and it's just been, it's been a pleasure to work with those folks. I, I hope the best for this community. I, I'm still a resident, a citizen, and taxpayer, and I'm sure I'll have comments for that sometime as well. But I guess the, the last thing I should say is that as much fun and as much good work as we've gotten done over the last nine and a half years, none of that would have been possible without the folks in Six Eleven North Knights, and so I want to thank Karen and Edison for all of their patience, and the nights away, and weeks away, and the different times that, that they had to put up with, a lot more than most folks should be asked to put up with. So I certainly appreciate their support, and they're part of the team who made them come to meetings. And so thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you from the city commission. I think this is, this has been a good evening for our community, with the way that you handled it, Mr. Chair. I respect that and appreciate that, and I wish the best for the city of Livingston. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I do want to state a couple of things in relationship to getting to leaving. First and foremost, I've always said that the process, it's always been something I didn't agree with. And I believe that we did the process the best we could this time around. And it was the way it should have been done, in my opinion, from the start. I've been very clear about that, I think. So I really appreciate the commission for being a part of that process and using the evaluation and and not making it a public lynching that it has been in the past, which I have never felt comfortable with. And secondly, I, what I'm hoping, you know, we've had a lot of division in this community over the issue of the city manager. And I think it's time to heal. I think we need to start coming together more and getting things done instead of having the separate, like side fighting, limb fighting, and external fighting, whatever it was. So I'm hoping that this will prompt a speaking.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else want to provide any comments before you move on to the next panel? No? Okay.
Point of order, a quick point of order.
Yes, sir.
Is there other, are there other sentiments that we should express before?
What were you going to make, you're going to come up later for the commission comment? Yeah, we'll have commission comments.
So, do we wish, I think we should make, given the past history of the commission, we should make a motion officially accepting the resignation.
Did we just do that?
No, we made a motion supporting the letter that if he resigns, then this is what we will give. And we probably still have to make a motion to, also to affirm the second I'll, I'll that's just this, this letter. That's not although, city attorney, I'm sure will take care of some of these, but at least let's get a motion officially accepting the resignation. I make a motion that we accept Mr. Meese's resignation effective immediately.
The motion is second. We need discussion. Okay. Roll call, please.
Chair, first amendment?
Yes.
Yes, commissioner, ready to?
Yes.
Four. Four.
And, Mr. Chair, just so we can make it very clear.
Hold on for a second. Motion passes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I make a motion. We approve one hundred and eighty days severance pay to the city, to the ex-city manager, effective immediately.
For a second?
Is that stated in the letter?
Can you clarify this first?
If there are questions about it, why don't we just go through and make sure the point is clarified so we can get it on the record? So if somebody wants to second his motion, let's
Okay.
Sure, I do say.
Is there any roll, discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Chair, first amendment?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopland?
Yes, commissioner, ready to?
Yes.
Four. Four.
Motion passes. The next item is not on the agenda, but we need to assign a city manager interim for the next two weeks before our next meeting. And I'm proposing that we assign Lisa Loi as the city manager to sit in that position until we have a chance to review it in the next public meeting in two weeks. And that, that should be put on the agenda as an action item to discuss. There is a motion and second, commission to second. Mr. Stern?
Thank you, Chairman Bennett. So, why Ms. Loi?
She's HR director. She knows the staff well. The other department heads are very busy with internal projects and projects that are ongoing. And I thought someone that knew the staff, someone that they would support and trust was a good choice for it until we have a public discussion.
Very good. I do support Ms. Loi and agree that she would do a good job. And there are others that I think might be more, better suited to that. In a situation like this, I think it's important to pull from the inside the organization. And I also think it's critical that the interns should be a should be the head of one of the emergency responders, responding services, actually. Most involved in the operations. And so, under that criteria, it'd be like the fire chief or the police chief. And for the successful operations of the city, that would be my personal recommendation. And so, depending on how this next motion goes, that's what I would vote for.
Do you also have comments? Do you want to add to the discussion?
Chair, are we going into a place of personnel discussion? Should we vote in executive?
I, I don't think at this point we are. I mean, you've got a motion and a second. I can't anticipate what further discussion is going to come from the commission, but I believe that it's going into a matter of individual privacy, I think.
Thank you very much. Is there any other commission discussion, comments? So, all right. So. So, roll call, please.
Chair, first amendment?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopland?
Yes. Commissioner, ready to?
Uh, pass.
Pass means? I don't want to make a vote, but abstain.
Abstain. No disrespect to Ms. Loi, but against.
Four.
Okay. Motion passes. All right.
So, let's be clear, those, it goes on next agenda for final.
So, I, from my memory, James made a motion that we place this item on the next agenda, and that needs to be seconded, because I don't think that motion has to be seconded.
Thank you very much. Okay, action item B, discuss approved deny Calendar Street, Second and Fifth Street corridor study. Who would that be? Shannon, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's my understanding that Commissioner Hopland has had discussions with the ex-city manager on getting a proposal for a pedestrian traffic study, safety study on Calendar Street from Second Street to North Fifth Street. I acquired a proposal from TD and H Engineering, our city engineer, that is very thorough and covers all of the items necessary to provide a recommendation to the city. The lump sum used for that service is fifteen thousand dollars. We can pay for that, probably with the combination of street maintenance funds and potentially street impact fees, but that will be something I need to talk to the finance director about. But, you know, this was not a budgeted item. This was something that's come up since then, so if you have any other questions, I can certainly elaborate on the proposal that TD and H states for that. Ms. Chairman, our Commissioner Hopland to elaborate on her request.
I feel like we're in going further into this discussion than I, I feel comfortable tonight in this sense of I hadn't met with Ed yet to discuss it. I've been having a lot, and I've mentioned this at other meetings, but I've had a lot of discussions with community members on the safety of Calendar and how it's used as a drill there. And, and we've had people come in and discuss with us with things they've witnessed in some of the other streets and the safety of the streets. So, this is the first, I heard about a possible study and that we were going to have that as an option, but I feel like we could move this to a future time just with more information and more time to discuss it and look at it. Everyone will pay with that.
Would you like to table it, please?
Yeah.
This is being a perfect item to examine in the context of the new budget year. And when you go to discuss the goals and objectives for the new budget year, bring this as a line item and see if the administration can fit it in, bring it in at the beginning of the budget process.
Well, and I, yeah, and I thought of that as well. I think one of the other things is whether is a study necessary or is it an internal study of safety and signage? And maybe having the city clearly state some of the advantages and disadvantages of a study versus choosing to put up signs where they, you know, had, and that could be police chief, you know, giving, you know, feedback on safety and things like that. So I, I feel because I haven't had enough time and or we haven't talked about it, I'm not sure where to go today.
And if I might come in as well. You know, one of the intersections that was included in this proposal is actually an intersection that we're going to be redoing due to the transportation access program, the Fifth Street intersection. Certainly, the east side of that intersection is going to be updated with current ADI standard signage, signage and striping as part of that project. So we could reduce the scope. I would recommend that any studies like this, certainly we need to have involvement with the traffic engineer. Certainly, Public Works, the police department can, can provide all the information, but the ultimate recommendation is to come from an engineer for a study like this.
We put it back on sooner or later.
So, do you know what information we're going to need in order to bring it back on the agenda?
Certainly, and if, if I need to, I can get with Ms. Loi and with Ms. Hopland on and get a clarification. But I, but I certainly want them to be aware of what we're doing in Fifth Street and those are, those have been designed by MDT, so if we need to reduce the scope a little bit, we can bring back a revised proposal. And then we can make a decision to incorporate that in the capital improvement plan or move forward if we can fit it in the budget.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I just wondered, or to add to it. I've had people ask me, so we added stop signs to Calendar. And I'm not sure how we came up with a decision to add that, but that could be part of that discussion as to how that happened. When we did add the signs, I know some of it has to do with adding our new light, our safe, you know, our street light. But if that could, if there's any reference to how we came about those decisions.
Certainly. The stop sign at Seventh and Calendar was actually recommended through a traffic study, through Staley, and they use the subcontractor, Bob Marvin Associates, out of, out of Billings, who is a traffic engineer. So, there was a study. It was approximately seven thousand dollars, but they, they, it's a rather elaborate study, and I'd be happy to pass that along to anyone to see the information that they acquire to make that recommendation.
So, Lisa, when this, if this comes up for the next meeting, we'll just find out if there's enough information to put it back on as an action item. Thank you very much. All right, so action items C, which was originally B, discuss approved deny code enforcement operations. So, Jim?
Chair.
Thank you very much.
First of all, I need to apologize that I did not realize that this was going to be on this agenda. Oh, so I had a discussion with the city manager. Okay. For, in preparation, quite frankly. All right. What I would suggest at this point, I'm not real clear on exactly what the request was, but if, I believe this is also Commissioner Hopland's. If you can communicate with Ms. Loi and myself, I'd be glad to put a response in writing and then we can discuss it even in the next meeting.
Okay. So, we'll table this action item as well for the next meeting.
Did you have some comment on that?
Oh, you mean from this?
Code enforcement.
Yeah. The only, the only comment I had was that I've heard from a number of constituents in the last week, and several things came up, it's like ordinances that we have that we don't have the personnel personnel or the, the time to really enforce. One of those things was tree trimming. We have an ordinance on the books for keep, for individual property owners to trim their trees. And I think that the point was made that now that we have a larger cap, street sweeper, that the ordinance is now changed from eight feet to thirteen feet, I believe, is I mean, I mean, it does give you those sidewalk clearance. And thirteen, I think is a street street clearance, yeah. Is the street clearance always been up to thirteen? I don't remember. I have heard about that. It's, I think it's always been more than sidewalk. Yeah. But there seemed to be some reference about the idea that the street sweeper cap is now higher than it was before, and that may need some adjustment because of that requirement. The other issue that came up was street sweeping and code enforcement for moving cars and, you know, taking vehicles, that type of thing where even though we have that code on the books, the street sweeper still has to go around go around parked cars that don't get moved when their, their street is up or so we want to address that as well. Be glad to do that with Mr. Holmes's assistants who put it in writing. Get the discussion started. Okay. And of course, the dog issue came up again. And the other one was slower vehicles. Not on the streets, but on the sidewalks. Yeah. So.
I had wanted to add the night sky ordinance. Some signage questions. If you are signs in town, they seem to be breaking the ordinance. And people not sure how we handle it as
They're not ready to try to cover everything that seems to be code enforcement. All right, is there any other commission input on that? No. Thank you very much, Jim. Appreciate that. Okay. We are at the liberal meeting, city commission comments, Commissioner Freeman.
Yes, I, I wish
Thank you for speaking in the microphone. Speaking in the microphone. Okay. Yeah, sorry.
I wish the, Ed and Karen Meese the very best in the future. I agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Hopland, I'd like to say, about getting this community back together. I worked with her for four years. I found him a very professional manager. The meetings I attended outside of Livingston, special meetings, the League of Cities, collective officials, and to contact our fellow city employees. The staff that he put together. I mentioned Livingston when I go outside of town, and everybody has very good comments to make about this town. Ed can sit with all his peers, the meetings that we're at, and hear very good comments about that. So it's just in my working situation with him, we had a good relationship, and I wish him the very best. Mr. Freeman, I would like to say, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stern?
Thank you. I also would like to express my appreciation to Mr. Meese and his family for their years of service and wish them the very best as they move forward in the next chapter of their lives. And then the other item is that I will miss both meetings in November. I will be traveling to Denver for a weekend, and then for business, the remainder of the month. So I suppose the meetings will be a lot quieter. So I suppose the meetings will get a lot quieter.
Alone, we'll try to compensate for it. We'll probably have to split it four ways. Mr. Ready?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, thank Ed Meese and his family. Thank you so much for what you've done with this community. I'd like to spend more time on that, but I'm a little more, I've got a hesitation on my resignation. I've had a lot of people saying I should stick around. Tonight really concreted the reason I want to get out of the City Commission. I heard rumors kind of all day long about what was going to happen. In fact, and Ms. Lowey being appointed. And just, man, you know, and I know now they want to talk, I really don't have anything to talk about as far as the commission. I really, I think I sent out the email to you folks. Man, it's just, just weird how stuff happens. And I know, you know, people posed us, a couple of us went out on a limb to, you know, really, really speak for the community, I think, to, you know, get a new city manager. I talked to Ed a few times about resignation, no response. And now it just seems like a political ploy, I think, for the next election that's coming up. Folks that are within the commission, you know, looking to take care of themselves. I've never been one. I have no problem. If I make bad decisions, good decisions, I have no problem. I know my life is going good. I treat people well. I don't care what happens with me as far as political reasons. Just, uh, kind of makes me a little upset, but also at the same time, any doubts I had about leaving the commission has now been concreted. So, you know, I wish the best luck for the community. And really, that's, that's what I was in here for, is for the community. Wasn't for me, wasn't for anybody else. So by the way, it went the way it did. And as far as, you know, making a public deal, that's, you know, sometimes that has to happen because you need to take, to take care of, in a public community. And anyway, I wish best luck to everybody in the new City Commission and with everybody within the city. And you guys do a great job. So I think that's around that question right now. Thank you. You guys have a great night, okay?
Thank you very much. Mr. Holton?
I'd say, I think what I would have normally said tonight, that is, I appreciate the process. It's the right thing to do. I definitely sympathize with the, the passion that has come from this community. I like it that people have a strong sense of what they think is right and wrong. And I want to thank John for being part of our commission. And it bums me out that he has resigned. And I want to thank Ed for all his work that he has done for us. And I, I'm glad that we are in a place where we can, you know, and move on.
All right, yeah. The only thing I have is positive. You know, I look forward to possible future for Livingston. I think that this is a great community and I know that, I know that the staff does a great job. I know that, you know, in this transition phase, we'll support each other and help each other along to make sure that things get done, that there's still stability within the community, that there is, the vital services will not see any interruptions and that, you know, the commissions and the staff's dedication to making things better for Livingston and for the community as a whole will continue. You know, I think the people here that tonight who come on a regular basis, the staff and the citizens who come in the 10 meetings, you know, we're probably in the commission. You know, we're probably more aware and maybe astute on the details that happen day to day. As I was driving to the meeting tonight, I just kind of reflected as I was passing, you know, tens of vehicles along the way, that most people work their life, go home, want to have a nice peaceful existence, love their families, want to, you know, try to strive to do the best for their life. And they don't really pay a whole lot of attention about what happens here. But in the back of their mind, they know that when they go home, the water will turn on, the toilets will flush, the garbage will be picked up, the streets will be plowed, the streets will be swept, the code enforcement person will pick up the stray dog. All those things will get done. And that's mainly what most people care about. They enjoy the parks, they enjoy the trails. I try to walk on the trails most every day. I'd like to walk on the trails most every day. I don't make it to the trails most every day. And, oh, this problem of getting old, you lose your train of thought. Don't let it happen to you. And it will come back to me. But all I know it was, it came back to me. That's unusual. I was talking to a gentleman just the other day. He called me up and he says, you know, I've been coming to this area for 25 years. I moved here, I don't know, I think maybe 10 years ago. But coming to the area 25 years before I moved here, he goes, you know, I'd always go to exit 333, go to Alerson's and McDonald's and then go fly past town on Yellowstone. I really didn't see Livingston. And when I retired, I wanted to move to Bozeman. And when I retired, they went to Bozeman and found that the housing was too much. And they discovered Livingston, came to Livingston. They love Livingston. In the state where they were living and did their, did their, what they were, they were, he was a professional. He said that he lived in a town just about the size of Livingston. Very, very similar. He said, in that town, his taxes were about three times the amount. He said, they only had one park. They didn't have a full-time fire department. They didn't have a full-time police department. The streets were not all paved. Same size of community. He comes here, he calls me up, and I hope he calls up other commissioners and people get a chance to talk to him sometime. He says, this is a great place. The taxes are low. We don't ever hear that, but he says the taxes are low. And the amenities that he has compared to where he used to live are unbelievable. Now, that's really nice to hear. And I know that what we have in Livingston and what's going to happen in the future is just going to be phenomenal. So I have just only the most positive vision and feelings for the future of Livingston. And, you know, I look forward to finishing out my two years on the commission here and hopefully seeing some of that stuff come to fruition. I want to thank Mike Goldness too. Mike does a great job with his committee, the Parks and Trails. Mike was out at the skate park on Saturday, Saturday. Mike was out there on a Saturday, meeting with a company that develops skate parks. I mean, that's the type of dedication you see with people around here at Livingston. Take their Saturday, spend an hour, hour and a half, whatever it was, and, and just make sure projects are kind of moving in the right direction. So I want to appreciate the community of Livingston, the staff of the City of Livingston, the mission for this opportunity to observe this. That was before I did it. I was just like everyone else who went home and joined on the water, flushed the toilet, and the garbage went away. And thought everything was just fine. Thank you very much. Public comments. Does anyone have any for public comments?
Ryan Revard, 812 River Drive. James, I liked your story, it was lengthy, but the only thing I think you left off is, I agree, the public spaces are wonderful, but I think we have a wonderful police and fire department. I think that those two are the key to our community, keeping us safe. I'm disappointed that we put the budget, our, both of our, I saw there everyone was getting cut and we were able to outside our contract and give an additional three months. We were cutting our fire and police services and our public works services. I think that's sad. And then the other thing we talked about is the people who come here on a regular basis. I said I didn't want to anymore, but two weeks ago, I was at home watching the meeting like I always do and you guys passed, I don't know if it was an ordinance or resolution, to spend, I believe, $78,000 to put the base or the pillars for the URA, whatever that is, archway. That was never approved by the URA, never voted on, never discussed. It's only, the last time it was ever discussed was February. It's infuriating to sit at home and there was no one from the URA here. There was no one to keep it straight. I don't know, I believe it was Mr. Holmes and Mr. Meese. I don't know who they had a discussion with, but I've been to every URA meeting except for one in four years. They have not met since the last time in between this and they meet tomorrow morning. I'm going to go ask them why they approved it without voting on it. But I think it's a, it's a big concern that something is not being forthright and honest here. The, you know, as far as when I remember being with the URA, there is one meeting I haven't been on. That's no longer the plan. That's not moving forward. There are a lot of projects that are out there right now and it saddens me that this commission spent, I believe, $78,000 to go forward with that and no one even checked if that was something that the URA was doing. Thanks. Thank you very much.
More, any other public comments?
Jill Mayby, 310 South East Street. James, I, I have to apologize. I meant to write a letter on Monday to the editor thanking you for having your meeting with citizens in the morning last, oh.
It's not already.
Saturday. It was, it was great. I was really encouraged to see that there were, what, nine or 10 of us there? And it was made up of very thoughtful comments and people who were trying to be cognizant of your time and were exceedingly grateful for your willingness to do that. And I want to thank you and I will write that letter and remind people to, to come and talk with you and sit with you and listen and, and be heard. I, I'm real sad to see John running too. I'm sorry he left before my comments. I'm, I'm an old fogey. I'm 65 years old and I remember the first time I saw John and that he was running. I was quite surprised. I, I was a little taken back by all of the tattoos and things and I didn't have a lot of hope for him on the commission. He very pleasantly surprised me. I am very grateful that he was on the commission for the time that he was and for his dedication and his deep, deep sense of rightness and wrongness. He, he's a wonderful person personally. I, I love getting helped by him and I'm real sad to see him go. And you too, Adam. I'm real sad to see you leave too. We, we got off on the wrong foot a while back. I won't bring that up, but you also very pleasantly surprised me. I, I am very grateful for the time that you've spent on the commission and I, I have my deepest gratitude for all of the work that you put in. I really, really appreciate the fact that you do the research, you ask questions that need to be asked and you, and you listen and you return calls and things. And I am very much thankful.
Thank you very much.
Couldn't have done it without citizens like you.
Jakeyver, 227 South Second. I, you know, I realize that a lot of stuff that the city gets done can't be done without volunteer committees. To that end, there, I talked to a member who's volunteering, I can't, I don't have the name, but the historic zone there. And there was talk about Second Street, across from the deep end in the corner of the Murray. There was a photograph taken on there, I think in the 60s, of a stoplight that existed at that intersection. And one has never gone back because of pressure. And there's been, this individual operates business and he, he told me that he was, undue pressure was exerted on him, that if he didn't do things his way, that he was going to pull his business from him. And he said, it does not pay to be a volunteer. And I really think that the city commission basically has to look at the committee structure on there and look, and we're looking at, like Ryan Revard was talking about public safety. The public safety is really a, a concern there. And then the city commission sort of buckles under the pressure because some people don't like it there as opposed to what the true, what the true safety of the city is. I think that's something that needs to be addressed. Thank you very much. And I would like to echo Jill Mayby's comments about the listening forum. It was a small group, but I doubt there were cogent arguments on there. And, and I thank you for listening. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments?
Cheryl LaFlin to a voice calendar street, me too. I just want to say that I know that this is a tough decision. It's been a tough one for everyone. I've been in both positions, I've been in your positions, I've been in yours, and it's not easy. So I don't know why I'm emotional right now. I think this city is really cool. I think there's so much, I think there is healing that needs to be done. I think that, I just think we need to be really positive with each other. And we need, there's so much that is right within your grasp as a city, that our economic opportunities and our people can really, there's just a vision out there. I want to see you do that. And I know it's been stressful for everyone. And it's not just you. It's been really stressful on people in the community. So I applaud it and I also want to say to the people that it worked for, for Ed. I've been in their position, I've fought hard for someone that I really believed in. But I have to say that a lot of times you don't realize, we can be good, how much better things can be. And I have to say that my career would never have happened if people hadn't had a vision for something better and acted on it because the opportunities I had in my career would have never happened. I would have never been coached by Olympic coaches. I would have never trained with Olympic coaches. I would have never worked with Olympic teams had somebody had a vision of going for something better. And you can do better and I know you will. But my hope, we're in an election season. The choices here are really important and how we treat each other in this process is really important. And I have to say that when I look at what you as commissioners really need to know to make effective decisions. to make effective decisions, I'm really in awe of it, really, because you really are, you have to be able to assimilate a lot of information that is not easy. It's financial, it's budgetary, it's understanding, it's planning, it's really understanding consequences of your decisions. So as we move forward, I really hope that as we're on a committee, that you have to have the energy and the ability to either learn that information or have people on the commission that have expertise that can help us all. And I say us all because it is us all. And that one of the things that I was really struck by the last meeting was, it seemed, and I could be totally wrong because there's a lot I don't know, but it seemed like it was a surprise to hear that there was a $180,000 shortfall. And it seemed like it was a surprise to the commission. And I was really struck by that, that it was happening at the end of the meeting. And it seems to me that in terms of moving forward as a commission, it's, it's like I look at my own budget. If I want to spend chunks of money, I would want to know at the beginning of the meeting where we are. And then that informs a lot of our decisions, because we were making a lot of decisions that had, you know, for a lot of money. So, and then I started thinking back and I went, you know what, I only recall since Jen, since July, since I've been here, two financial reports where I had a sense of where we were financially. So one of my thoughts, just in terms of making forward, is I just really wondered whether or not at the beginning of your meetings, before you're making decisions about where we're spending our money, if there shouldn't be some type of a budget report and really close watch on the numbers? Because the numbers will tell you with the business or anything else, whether you're going towards success, or they will alert you really quickly to some disaster, and you can avoid that. So I was surprised. So anyway, I just wish us all the best, and I know it's been tough, and I really want us to heal and move forward in the best possible way. And I, I'm excited about what the possibilities can be for this town to take it even further. So bye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment? More, of course.
One, maybe, three ten South H Street. Tonight was a very, very difficult decision, and it was one that had to be made objectively and not being part of what happened, violation wise or whatever. I'm sure it was done objectively. And along with Sharon Bennett, I would like to see things proceed in a positive way. And I think in, in that light, I would like to see the city place more importance on the downtown business community. I'd like to see them, uh, be able to communicate with them better than, than they have. I don't think any of this is a conspiracy or intentional. I think that things happen and then they have, rather than be reactive, being proactive towards whatever's happening or going to happen with the infrastructure or, or any other aspects that might disrupt, uh, the business or any taxpayer in the, in the, in the city. I think that if there's a more of a what can we do for you approach taken, and that's not meant sarcastically or negatively or in any other fashion, I think that will be wonderful. I, I'd like to, I would just like to see things go on in a, in a positive fashion. I'd like to see more effort being done or put into economic development, which I keep harping on. And I'd like to see whoever comes into the city to inquire about it be met by a very positive, welcoming, willing to negotiate face. Overall, it's a very, not the most pleasant situation that we have, but it's something that, how to be done, it's not personal, it's strictly business. Thank you.
Thank you very much, boy. Is there a further public comment?
Just wondering how many times I've written this. This is Patricia Gray, oh, two oh four East Calendar Street. First of all, I want to underscore what Commissioner Hoagland said. In terms of appreciating this commission and following the process, it's, it's deeply appreciated. Also, underscore again, but this commission as a whole has said is, which is, we have an opportunity to move forward in such a positive direction. I, and I have to take just a minute to plug for something because Gardner kind of is, was the crux that we're at now. When they moved ahead and did their infrastructure program and just went to town, I think we have that potential right now. And I presented to all of you and to the BID and to the URA and to the Downtown Design Committee, the Centennial Economic Development Program that the business community came up with. And I think that really can happen. And it would be so thrilling for that to happen. And I'm going to be interviewing with the newspaper tomorrow because people are surprised that the President of the United States could potentially be coming to Livingston on August 25th for the dedication of the national parks. And we can be ready for it. We could do an amazing infrastructure project that works with existing money and existing sources. So I just needed to put a plug into that because I just see that is symbolic of the direction that this, this commission has worked with. And I'm so, I just appreciate the positive direction, and we do need to pull together and really like and appreciate each other. And so I thank you so much. You have a grateful citizen here. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Public comment? Hearing, hearing none, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Say it. On paper. All right. This meeting is adjourned after early hours. Thank you very much.